Good evening. I'd like to call the zoning board of appeals to order for Tuesday, December 3, 2024. Will the city call the roll, please?
Ms. Defoe.
Here.
Mr. Friedman.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Libbit.
Present.
Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Havas. Madam Chairperson, you have a quorum to conduct business.
Thank you. Are there any communications?
None at this time.
Okay, so we will move into our public hearing. I'll briefly describe how we conduct business. For those of you who haven't joined us, the city will call the case by the case number. They'll read a brief summary of that case. Then we ask the appellant to step to the podium and the microphone, explain to the board what you're asking for and why. There's also a sign-in sheet there, so please sign in. And then the city will read the findings of fact. We ask you to agree with those facts or add any other facts at that time. Then we'll receive a staff recommendation. You can still speak again after that recommendation. And then we'll open it for public comment. So if you're here to speak on public comment, that would be your opportunity on that case. Then we'll turn it over to the board to deliberate, make a decision, and move on. So will the city call the first case, please?
Case number 2432. The staff's requesting to postpone the case to a certain date of January 7, 2025.
Okay. Can I have a motion to postpone this case, please? Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Well, you call the next case, please.
Case number 2431. The appellant, Andrew Zelke, Blue Ranch Holdings LLC, is requesting the following from the board. A variance for two wall signs not facing a major thoroughfare: zero allowed, two proposed. A variance for one garden ground sign that exceeds five feet in height, five feet allowed, six feet proposed, a variance of one foot in height. A variance for one menu board that exceeds five feet in height, five feet allowed, six feet three inches proposed, and that exceeds 35 square feet in size, a variance of 11.3 square feet in size: 35 square feet allowed, 46.3 square feet proposed. The property is located on the east side of Southfield Road between Windflower Drive and 12 Mile Road at 29970 Southfield Road, Sidwell Parcel Number 762412153019, Zoned B3, General Business District. This appeal is to Section 8.60, Parts II, A, C, D, Article 11, Chapter 99 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the sign ordinance.
Great, thank you. Is the appellant here? Hey there. You could step to the microphone. Make sure you're speaking right into the microphone so we can hear you.
Andrew Zelke, 4564 Oakhurst Ridge Road, Clarkston, Michigan, 48348.
Okay. I need you to speak a little tighter to the microphone, please.
Yeah, I was trying to sign in.
Thank you.
There you go. Okay, perfect. So just as he had read earlier, we're requesting a variance for two wall signs not facing a major thoroughfare. And just because it's our brand standard to have, you know, signs around all four sides. But since one side's facing a residential area, we just are asking for the two, the north and south side, for the ZBA to propose and allow us to install. And then also, our ground sign is a standard six-foot-high sign. And that's pretty much, you know, the smallest sign that the Culvers brand has for a monument sign. And that makes it, you know, easier and more visible for traffic to see our sign. And then also, the menu board, we're looking at, you know, we have a very diverse menu, a lot of different things on it. So by making a smaller menu board, it'll create a longer hardship for people to order and take longer ordering times and create more congestion and traffic. So we're looking at, you know, installing those, you know, options for signs on our building.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Finding of facts for case 2431. The appellant, Andrew Zelke, Blue Ranch Holdings LLC, is requesting the following from the board. A variance for two wall signs not facing a major thoroughfare: zero allowed, two proposed. A variance for one garden ground sign that exceeds five feet in height, five feet allowed, six feet proposed, a variance of one foot in height. A variance for one menu board that exceeds five feet in height, five feet allowed, six feet three inches proposed, and that exceeds 35 square feet in size, a variance of 11.3 square feet in size: 35 square feet allowed, 46.3 square feet proposed. The property is located on the east side of Southfield Road between Windflower Drive and 12 Mile Road at 29970 Southfield Road, Sidwell Parcel Number 762412153019, Zoned B3, General Business District. The appeal is to Section 8.60, Parts II, A, C, D, Article 11, Chapter 99 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the sign ordinance. The property to the north is Zoned B3, General Business, and is developed with several restaurants, a pet grooming service, a foot care service, and a phone service store. The property to the south is Zoned RS, Regional Shopping, and is developed with multiple single-story mercantile businesses, including clothing and sports apparel stores, a party supply store, and a fitness center. The property to the east is Zoned RMM, Multiple Family, Medium Rise, and is a developed multifamily, two-story apartment community. The properties to the west are Zoned OS, Office Service, and is developed with a dental care office, several restaurants, and one active and one former vacant financial institution. Field inspection of the surrounding area reveals a variety of different types of zoning, as previously mentioned, including B3, RS, RMM, and OS. The subject property is the location of a proposed new restaurant and is also Zoned B3. The subject property is a 3,808 square feet building presently under construction. Once completed, the site will have two entrance exits, one at Windflower Drive and one at Southfield Road. The appellant is requesting the following variances. A variance for two wall signs not facing a major thoroughfare: zero allowed, two proposed. A variance for one garden ground sign that exceeds five feet in height, five feet allowed, six feet proposed, a variance of one foot in height. A variance for one menu board that exceeds five feet in height, five feet allowed, six feet three inches proposed, and that exceeds 35 square feet in size, a variance of 11.3 square feet in size: 35 square feet allowed, 46.3 square feet proposed.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Are there any other facts you'd like to add at this time?
No, not this time.
Okay. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is denial of variance for the two wall signs not facing a major thoroughfare: zero allowed, two proposed. This recommendation is based on the following: The proposed variance for two wall signs not facing a major thoroughfare is not consistent with the spirit and intent of the sign ordinance. The proposed wall signs not facing a major thoroughfare would not be in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and could have an adverse effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties. Staff recommendation is favorable consideration for a variance for one garden ground sign that exceeds five feet in height, five feet allowed, six feet proposed, a variance of one foot in height, and a variance for one menu board that exceeds five feet in height, five feet allowed, six feet three inches proposed, and that exceeds 35 square feet in size, a variance of 11.3 square feet in size: 35 square feet allowed, 46.3 square feet proposed, with the following conditions: The digital portion of the garden ground sign meets the requirements of Article 3, Section 8.50A of the sign ordinance, electronic changeable copy, and the appellant secures the required permits from the Southfield Building Department, and all required inspections are approved. This recommendation is based on the following: The proposed variances for the garden ground sign and menu board appear to be minor in nature and appear to be consistent with the spirit and intent of the sign ordinance, and the proposed variances for the garden ground sign and menu board appear to be in keeping with the character of the surrounding areas and would not have an adverse effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties, and the proposed sign will not interfere with or be objectionable from the standpoint of traffic safety.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to add before we go to public comment?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. So we will open public comment on this case. If you wish to speak to this case, now would be your opportunity to come forward and address the board. Hi there.
Good evening. Just name and address, correct?
Yeah, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Randy Koffer at 30550 Red Maple Lane in Southfield, Michigan.
Okay.
I agree with the city's recommendation to reject the ordinance. I feel like it's unnecessary to have the extra signage there. That area is open up to a family residential area. And while the signs may not be facing the main thoroughfare of Webster and Southfield Road, it will cause issues later. Other fast foods restaurants in the area do not have those additional signs but also have a sizable menu and offerings. Culvers knew of the restrictions when they selected that lot, and they've already begun building and demolition to prepare that property. And I just believe that the oversized signage is unnecessary.
Okay, thank you very much.
Should I also sign in, or is that unnecessary?
Yes, please, sign in. Yeah, name and address, please. Thank you very much. All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this case? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Friedman?
I do have a question. I was looking at that, that sign, and there's four circles on the building suggesting you were planning to put four different large building signs on there. But I think you mentioned that you're not asking for one facing the residential...
This one?
Correct, yes. Just the north and south side.
Just the north, so should not, so just the north and south and the approved one facing the...
Facing the west side.
Okay. I have, I have no issues with any of the signs, including the two signs not facing the main thoroughfare. You know, those are major streets, you know, those signs can help. You know, frankly, I have more problems, we grant all these menu board signs, I have more problems with the menu boards than the, than the building sign. I think the building like that should have a, especially with an entrance on that, especially on the one facing the entrance from that smaller road. So I have no problems with any of the signs.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Libbit?
I don't think we should start granting a lot of extra signs. And I'm glad there won't be one facing the residential area, but I am passing that area a lot. And I think that what has been recommended should, should stand.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rogers?
I don't think exposure is an issue where that, where the Culvers will be located. It's not setback. It's the front of a very large area with a lot of retail and stuff like that. I mean, I do understand the sign proliferation. It's not part of the branding. You don't need the signs facing north and south for the branding of Culver. Is that typical for a Culver hamburger place to have?
Yeah, to have it on, that's why, yeah, to have it on all four sides of the building, correct. But obviously, the residential side, you know, would never put that sign on that side. But yeah, it's typical to have a Culvers branded logo on all four sides of the building.
So it's not, it's not, is it an exposure issue, or is it a branding issue, or is it a combination of both?
A combination of both.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with the signs. I just feel like there is, there is a lot of exposure there. It has, it's gonna have a ground sign in the front. But being, you know, I'm against sign proliferation. I don't, I don't think this is sign proliferation. I think these signs actually are tailor-made for this type of style of building, again, the color of the building. I think they blend in. I've seen them before, that's why I'm saying that. So I would allow this variance for these two extra signs.
Okay. So one of my questions that I don't think is in the findings of fact, and correct me if I'm wrong if I'm missing it, is the frontage, how much, how many feet of frontage they have? Because usually, when we've thought about considering additional signage, right, because the frontage correlates to the square footage of signage that they're allowed on their wall signs, we've looked at, do all the wall signs, square footage add up to within their, like, what their front signage would be allowed? And the signs on, the signs on the side are very small. They're like 29 square feet. So in total, all three of them are like 104 square feet. So I was really curious, like, what their frontage is, as I'm not great at reading drawings. Because I was, I was also thinking the same thing. Like, I was thinking, like, if the square footage is within what we would allow, I might be willing to go for the three, because they seem rather small.
Yeah. And if, and if they're not, I would assume he'd be more, you'd be more interested in the one facing the north.
Probably, yeah, because that's our main entrance side.
Can anybody read the drawing to tell me what the frontage is? I mean, it is, and it is an odd-shaped lot, because it's wider at the back than it is at Southfield Road. It's really small.
So it's about 135, 135.4 feet from the front of the building to, looks like, the right-of-way.
Right, but isn't it this frontage?
Of course, she's talking about the frontage.
Frontage, yeah.
Is that 96 feet? No, it's 96.
So 96 feet to 105 square feet of signage. Is that right, 96 feet? Does that seem like the correct...
What's that, 96?
96 feet is the frontage?
96 feet?
Yeah. Is that sound?
No.
The frontage along Southfield Road?
No, because there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 10 parking spots, and there are nine feet, so it's 90 feet just right there. So you're probably close to 175 to 200 feet, probably, 200 feet across the front.
Okay. Oh, that 96 is from the driveway, maybe?
Yeah, that's just the driveway areas.
Okay. So, yeah, so, do you guys understand what I'm saying? Like, the, the front, so if the, the frontage, we think, is over 150 feet, the square footage of the signs for those three signs is 105. So if I'm, am I, am I correct in the sign ordinance that if they wanted to put a 170-square-foot sign on the front, that's, follows the ordinance? Is that right?
As long as they didn't exceed the permissible square footage per, like, the linear footage.
Right, but isn't that what it is? It's one, one, you can have a square footage the size of your frontage. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So, so this is smaller than that, I guess is, but my, my point is. So I do tend, I feel comfortable that it's not too big of inappropriate signs when we would allow a sign the size of the three signs on the front. Does that make sense? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, the signs are more, like, symmetrical, with the size, size of the front and the size of the building versus splash on the front, I don't know what you're saying.
I hear what you're saying.
Okay.
It's taking, um, the concept of perhaps a very large sign in the front and divvying it up into three locations, making them all essentially smaller.
So, but all three of them would be larger if you put all three of them.
Cumulatively, yeah.
It would cumulatively be larger.
It would be smaller, still.
Right, because the front one is just 46 square feet, and the two sides are 30. So the side ones are smaller than the front one, based on what it says here. Let me see what page it was. I saw it, because I was like, I don't want to calculate this footage.
The signs, I think, are 10 feet long, according to the...
They say, right here, sign square footage.
This one's 128 inches. Yeah, this one's almost eight feet.
This one's right there.
Okay, yeah, there you go.
Square footage is already calculated.
Yeah, so you got 46 and 29, is that what you're, 46 and, yeah.
So it's 105, basically. All three of them add up to that, right?
Yeah, 60, yep, 107, something like that.
Yeah. So I guess, just based on the size of them being smaller, and I do think they fit with the building. So I agree with what you're saying, like, a brand and it, you know, you have the, what did we, what did we call it on the other place? I don't know what that's called, that area. But it's like, it's designed for a sign. So...
Like a capula or something?
Yeah, right, capula. So...
Yeah, the, the building lens, it's tailor-made to have a sign on it. If you've seen them, that's how they look architecturally.
And that is a really small sign for the Southfield. I've actually seen them differently than that, though. This is, this is not your typical building. I've seen that there's one on Little Mac somewhere that I went by and actually took a look prior to the other last week. And it's nothing like this.
It's got a different design. Well, I think this is a smaller lot than they usually do, so they had to make a smaller building. But, so I guess, I would, I think I would also support the variance for the two wall signs, maintaining them at the size that's presented, not like a blanket size, square footage. So, so, let's make a motion.
I can't.
Thank you.
So, so for that part, about as long as they stay at the, at the same size, should we give them a number of square footage which they can't go over?
Yeah.
Which was, what was, do we say that?
I mean, how about we say 120? Let's say 120, then we know we're within.
And also, I don't know if that's in the motion, but not one facing the housing.
The rear. Well, yeah, I guess.
The housing.
The housing, yeah.
Okay. How do I do this? Again, it's been a while. Okay, in regard to ZBA case 24-31, the appellant, Andrew Zelke, Blue Ranch Holdings LLC, is requesting the following from the board, variances for two wall signs not facing a major thoroughfare: zero allowed, two proposed. A variance for one garden ground sign that exceeds five foot, feet in height, five feet allowed, six feet proposed, so a variance of one foot in height, and a variance for one menu board sign that exceeds five feet in height, five feet allowed, six feet three inches proposed, and that exceeds 35 square feet in size, a variance of 11.3 square foot in size. Property is located on the east side of Southfield Road between Windflower Drive and 12 Mile Road at 29970 Southfield Road, Sidwell Parcel 762412153019, Zoned B3, General Business. I move that we approve the variances for two wall signs not facing a major thoroughfare: zero allowed, two proposed, and a variance for a garden ground sign in height that exceeds five feet in height, five feet allowed, six feet proposed. And I make this recommendation because...
Oh, wait, the menu board?
Yep. And a variance for one menu board that exceeds five feet in height, five feet allowed, six foot, six foot, three inches proposed, and that exceeds 35 square feet in size for a variance of 11.3 square feet in size. I make the, I move that we include the following conditions: that the entire square footage of the three proposed building signs not exceed 120 square foot in total, and that no building sign face the east side of the building, be placed on the east side of the building facing the residential area. I make this recommendation based on the fact that these variances are minor and would not interfere, you know, interfere with traffic safety or, and believe that they do, and that, and that they do meet the standards set by the sign ordinance. I would also like to include the condition that the digital portion of the guarded ground sign meet the requirements of Article 3, Section 8.50A of the sign ordinance regarding electronic changeable copy, and that the appellant secure the required permits required by the Southfield Building Department.
Great, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, your request is granted. Continue to work with the city through your permitting process.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that concludes our public hearing. We do have a set of minutes from October 22. Did anyone see any changes or corrections? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes for October 22?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the meeting, I'm sorry, the minutes are approved. Next, our next meeting is January 7. We have one residential setback case and two sign cases. Anything else on the next meeting? Any concerns? Okay. So let's move to miscellaneous. We have our election of officers for the next year, so that is a chair and a secretary. Mr. Secretary, do you want, do you wish to continue to serve?
If you want me to. I, I, I fail at the basic requirement of the job by never having a pen, but, but I'm willing to keep borrowing pens and do the job.
Okay, thank you.
I move that we keep our current officers in place.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next up is our calendar for next year, and I think Nicole has a couple things to share.
Yes, I do. There, it does, it does turn out there's three conflicts with the schedule, and that would be January 21, August 5, and November 4. Council chambers are not available. So I don't know if you would like to just cancel those, or if you would like me to find another date.
Yeah. I mean, I think we have canceled them in the past. I think that's probably fine. We, and if it's in the permanent calendar, then people will plan around them. Okay. Right? Yes.
Second.
Plus, the cases have been very moderate.
Right, right. Yeah, we haven't had a heavy case load.
Yeah, it's not like we have, like, seven cases.
Yeah, we're not dealing with six and seven cases. Right, right, right. Well, you just jinxed us for next year.
Yeah, you know, it's a good thing.
Jason, did somebody check out, you know, Passover, Jewish holidays?
I did not. I was gonna ask you if you...
Do we have a meeting scheduled for April 15?
We do.
We won't, me and Jason won't, we cannot be able to...
Okay, so April 15 is a...
Wait, 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 no, I'm doing that wrong. I'm doing that wrong. We, we, we shouldn't be able to make it, forget it.
Okay.
Speak for yourself.
Yeah.
I'm taking that day off.
Well, it's the middle of the holiday, but it's not one of the first or second.
Okay.
And then later in the year, we would not be able to do September 23.
That's fine.
We would not be able to do October 7.
Okay, that is on there.
And October 14 either.
Okay, so October 14 isn't, but the 7th is. So...
No, October 4, but both, both October 7th and 14th would be a problem. Which one do you say was the meeting?
The 7th.
7th is the meeting, okay.
Yeah. So, I mean, we would still have three members, and we could call Mr. Havas and, you know, request him now to put it on his calendar, that we'd need him for October 7. So, yeah, I mean, or, I mean, October's kind of getting late in the season, but, yeah, I mean, I guess, what do you think? Do you think we should cancel it, hold it, move it?
I think we could, you know, perhaps deal with it when we get closer to it, see if we have cases, you know.
Okay, so I maybe put a note on it, an asterisk on it, that it may be canceled? Okay. Or there may not be a quorum, right? I mean, that I think is, is fair.
And I'm saying, if you'd want a quorum, you should get ahold of Mr. Havas.
Right, right, exactly. And if he refuses, then we won't have a quorum. Okay. Okay, rules and procedures. Did any, we did obviously make the amendment earlier this year, so we did look at them in regards to the training. Did anybody have anything else they were concerned about or wanted to?
I actually have a question. I think it's just, it could just be a typo, but Article 5, paragraph 5.
Okay.
Whenever any variation of modification of the strict application of the terms of the zoning, should that be whenever any variation or modification?
I feel like that's, is that statutory? I don't know why I feel like that, that part of that language feels...
It could be, yes. So I have the really old rules of procedure back at the office.
Okay, so maybe we could look at that, because it is possible. These probably have been adjusted from word processors to...
Sounds like, sounds like it should be, yeah.
Or?
Yeah, or.
At least grammarized.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right.
But, but...
I mean, I don't know...
Yeah, but, but variation or modification.
I mean, I don't know, I try to see what it'd be saying with of, and it doesn't make any sense to me, so I think you may be right.
That's exactly, as I read through it, I thought, hmm.
Mm-hmm. And I think that's a, a minor change, so that's a, yeah, I don't know that we have to vote on that change. I think that's just a, that's an error that's been carried forward.
Just get some white out.
Yeah. Take, reduce the size of that asterisk.
It has a long tradition of existence.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
So, and then I have a question about our education.
Yes.
So, when and what and where and what, what is really the expectation?
Yeah, so I think the Michigan Association of Planners is really who holds, hosts most of the sessions, and the city will cover the cost, so you just have to schedule it, and then they'll pay for it.
Okay, so do they have virtual?
I think they're, yeah, and they host them in Open County, too.
Oh, great, okay.
So, they host them at the county, yeah. I think when this came up, there was one coming up like the next week or something like that.
And it was during the day?
Right, right, right. So, there, the one that I attended, I think, I feel, I feel like I actually drove to Oakhamis, I think that's where it was, and it was in the evening, and it was with other zoning board of appeals members from other communities, and I actually thought it was very interesting to hear how other zoning boards operate.
Operate, yeah.
Very many of, well, you've served on another one.
Yes, I have.
Right, so, very different.
Kalamazoo.
Yeah, very, very different, so, but yeah, I feel like there is some, and I, and I think we were careful to not be too strict with what our education was when we added it, so.
And is this from January to December? It's within two years?
The first two years of your term, so whenever your term started. I think our, I don't know if our terms will start at the same time.
No, I think mine started in September.
Okay. So, and I think we said with this new rule, it's like, I think, you know, flexibility, but a little two years from when we test the rule, yeah.
I think I've been on for two years.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's time.
Yeah. So, yeah, because we did this in April. April is when we added it to the rules.